All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. The Planning Board has an opening for an associate member, and applications for this will be accepted by the Select Board until the last week in May. So that's too late. All right. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bogart, if you could read our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Bogart. Thank you. All right. The first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? All right. Seeing none. Our next item is the item to ratify the town administrator contract. That contract arrived to the Select Board too late today for us to be able to review it. So we'll be putting that off until our next meeting on the 21st. So that brings us to our six o'clock agenda item. Approval of Police Department policy, state and national criminal history record checks of applicants for licenses in specific occupations. Chief, if you'd like to join us. And while the chief is coming up, I'll read the policy. It is the goal of the Select Board as the primary licensing authority for the town of Carver in coordination with the chief of police to ensure the safety of its citizens and to regulate the use of such licenses to ensure that they are used responsibly and that activities are conducted lawfully and that such licensing activities do not detract from the quality of life in neighborhoods or in the town as a whole. The regulations contained herein have been promulgated to achieve the above stated safety goals and objectives pursuant to the town's adoption of the Civil Fingerprinting Bylaw, Chapter 5, Section 17, consistent with the Authorizing Statute, Mass. General Law, Chapter 6, Subsection 172B 1/2. All right. Chief Dufly.
Good evening. Thank you for some time tonight to talk to you about this. Just a little historical perspective, I guess, to help us get through this. And from disclosure, I did not write this. Obviously Coleman Page did for us. So we may have some questions that we need to get to them if possible. But back, a couple of years back, we had an individual come into town, Hall wanted to apply for a license to sell ice cream from an ice cream truck. State law requires that person, obviously because they're going to be around children, to have a pretty intensive background check done, including a background check based on their fingerprints. Obviously, the police department is the only one that can take the fingerprints. So they were sent over to us to forward this procedure. But state law does not allow for us to take fingerprints for civil matters unless there's a town bylaw passed and unless there's a policy passed by the Board of Selectmen and some other things, including permission from the state police and the FBI. We started the process working with Coleman Page and brought forth a bylaw to town meeting in June of 2020, I believe. And it passed. Then it went up to the Attorney General's Office where it was vetted there and passed. And we sent that bylaw on to the state police and to the FBI to get their permission to be able to take fingerprints and submit them for a background check, receive that information back, and then use that information for a civil process, not a criminal process. As you might imagine, most of the stuff we do involves criminal process and identifying somebody who's committed a crime. When we do something involving civil process, we need different permissions. And that's what we've accomplished by passing the bylaw at town meeting and then beginning this process. Process has taken a lot longer than any of us anticipated. We submitted all this paperwork up to the state police and FBI last May, and we're still waiting on an answer. I just checked with them a couple of weeks ago, and we still have not received an answer from them. So we, at this moment, couldn't do it. But one part in this process is what we had to talk about tonight, having a town policy that describes how, the why, the who, about how we'll handle this. So it talks about how we will take in an application, how the police department will process that applicant, take their fingerprints, send them out, how we'll receive that information back, and then how we'll disseminate that to whatever, whether it's the Select Board or a local agency, needs the information to make a decision on a licensing, a license decision. Again, like I said, we started with the permit to operate an ice cream truck, which in many towns is completely conducted by the police department, but is completely up to the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, how they want to handle that, who they want to make the decision. If the Board decides they're going to do the final approval, then we would take the fingerprints, provide the information back to the Board that they are, they don't have any crimes. It would preclude them from getting the license, and then the Board could sign off on the license. But as I said, some departments have it. So it comes to the police department, they take the fingerprints, and then they make the decision based on that and issue the license. There are other licenses that are listed in this policy that we're going to move forward on, that you could take fingerprints for, to do a background check on, but that you don't, it says shall in here in this policy. But we have some, I think we have some bylaws that might be contradictory to that, specifically the peddling door-to-door salesmen. We have a bylaw that says that they come to the police department, we do an in-house background check on, and then we issue the permit. That permit really is just a notification to the police department that somebody's out there selling door-to-door so that if we get a complaint, we have an idea of who might have done it. I find it hard to conceptualize that we could stop somebody from walking down the sidewalk anyway and knocking on somebody's door. That's the way it works. But this policy, its main purpose is to get us to move forward with the ability to license people who want to sell ice cream, which we currently cannot do. The policy itself, like I said, is very detailed into what rights the person who submits their fingerprints has if the, if data comes back that's negative, that we use against them, that they have a certain amount of time to appeal that and to get it corrected before we would make a decision. And I think that's all self-explanatory in the document. I hope the, I believe you had it early enough this week for people to look at. So I'll try to answer any questions if you have, and then to keep boring you with my explanation of it.
Okay. Chief, just so we're clear, I know you said Coleman Page wrote the policy, but you reviewed it. You're comfortable as the police chief with everything that's here?
Yes. The policy was sent to us. We added, add in a few things, such as the police department, the hours that we'd be available and such as that. But Coleman Page, actually, I'm not even sure they wrote it. Maybe they stole it from somewhere else, to be honest with you. But it did come through our law firm, so.
Okay. All right. Great. Mr. Fennessey, do you have anything to add?
No, it looks good to me. And I did talk to Tim about it, and he felt comfortable with it, too.
Okay. All right. Questions from the board? Mr. Carter?
Sure. Thank you. Just reading the list of licenses, managers of establishments of alcohol, alcoholic beverages, tobacco products. Would that be like a restaurant?
Yes, it could be, yes. But again, this is going to depend on how you're licensing. How you, how, I don't license any restaurants or alcohol establishments now. You guys do. So if you incorporate that into this as far as a background check for a manager like that, then we could get, take the fingerprints and give you the information. I'm not saying that we would take that over. You would continue to maintain your licensing authority of those places. But if you, as a board, decided you want to have a fingerprint-based background check, we would now be able to do it. We currently don't do that, but we would be able to do it because of that.
Gotcha.
If that makes sense.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Yards?
So Chief, you're saying that we wouldn't be required to do that for establishments of alcoholic beverages or tobacco products, but we could if we wanted to? Because it does say to be able to.
Right. And that's my understanding, that you would be able to. This, this gives us the ability to do it. I believe you're going to find that there, and I would defer to Mr. Fennessey or to Coleman Page as far as the legality of the current bylaws we have. Like, we have a bylaw on pawn shops, but it doesn't mention this in it. I think we would have to change that bylaw to reflect the fact that we could then do that. Because this gives us the ability to do it. I don't think we have the bylaws in place right now on the pawn shop or the other things to make that applicant do that.
Correct. Because a regulation only refers to a bylaw. So those bylaws have to be redone and adding this into it.
Right. And at the onset of this, again, the purpose was only to accomplish what was, the original purpose was to accomplish the licensing of ice cream trucks. But as Coleman Page worked us through this, this is how a normal town has this set up this way. So these are in there, and we could use them if we needed to in the future.
That's what I, okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right. So Mr. Fennessey, just so I'm clear, do we need a motion that specifies under Number 2 applicable licenses? Do we need to specify which ones we're applying this to?
I would, if this is, this is the final product, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So I would, I would list those as a motion.
So we're just looking at this time to apply this to the hawking and peddling or other door-to-door salespeople? Is that what we're looking, just limited to that? Or are we looking to do?
No, all, all seven.
All, all?
Six.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the board? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this policy pursuant to, should I read the whole thing under two?
I would call it a regulation.
The following regulation. Pursuant to the bylaw under the Authorizing Statute, Mass. General Law, Chapter 6, Section 172B 1/2, applicants for the following licenses shall submit fingerprints to the Carver Police Department for the police department to be able to conduct a state and national fingerprint-based criminal history check. Hawking and peddling or other door-to-door salespeople, hackney and livery drivers, ice cream truck or other mobile food vendors, managers of establishments of alcoholic beverages or tobacco products, dealer in secondhand articles, and pawn dealers.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You as well. All right. Next up is an announcement of a deadline to request a tie-in to the Plymouth Street water line for qualified residents. I know the town health agent, Mr. Fogg, was going to join us this evening on this, but he was unable to make the meeting. Mr. Fennessey, do you have the specified date he proposed?
Yes. He's, he's looking at September 21st, 2022 for the final date of all the tie-ins on the, on the line.
And this came basically from a town meeting vote a couple of years ago. We gave a year, right? We gave a year to deadline, yeah, deadline to, to tie in.
So it's actually more than what was?
It's more than a year. That's why we're giving them actually more than a year. All right. Discussion from the board?
So once a resident ties in, will they know, like, then they're responsible for all costs? The town's responsibility goes away once the resident is tied into the water line? Then it's off the town?
You mean the water costs?
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and the repairs, too? If something happens with, I just want the residents to know, like, because, you know, with electric, like, ever source is responsible from here to here, but if something happens in this section, you have to pay for it. Are the, are the residents aware of, like, if it happens here, the North Carver Water District is responsible? But if it happens here, it's your fault?
So there's probably a period of time where the hookup, you know, there may be, say, a leak or something?
Yeah.
That we would still be responsible to take care of. But after a certain period of time, and I'll check with Kevin what that is.
Yeah.
You know, who will be on.
Kevin's right there.
Oh, not the Kevin. Wrong Kevin. Kevin Fogg, in the Board of Health.
Yeah. We just, we, it's important for us to give Kevin a deadline so he can inform people so they know when they need to make a decision by.
Right. Because I know that, that they were concerned as, what is my financial responsibility going to be once I do tie in?
Basically, the biggest financial responsibility is the water.
Sure.
That they're buying, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Just so, I think I understand that, is rather than a betterment, the town is now telling residents that they can hook up for free, right? There's no cost to the residents.
This, this board voted, oh, a year and a half or so ago, basically to, to bring the water to people's, people's doors, their faucets. All they, we paid for everything up until when they turn their faucets on and they get the water. This is just a deadline to tie in and do that.
So now I'm no longer getting water that I was getting from the town?
What's that?
Was I getting water previously from the town?
You were.
So now that stops?
It stops because the, the water will be available to them. It's available now, and they can tie in. So this is to tell them, you got to tie in by that date, or, you know, you'd be buying your own water.
So if I'm a resident affected by this, I'll then go to the North Carver Water District, and I don't know my, my gallonage, what I'm using, but you'll be telling me a fee? Sorry, Kevin.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, maybe we could have Mr. Tracy come up here since he's here?
Kevin, if you're, if you're so willing.
Because I, I wanted to point out, I don't believe it's up to this board whether they're charged a betterment. I think that's up to the North Carver Water District.
I believe you're correct. This is just to give people a deadline to tie in.
The, the North Carver Water District does not and has never had any intention of charging a betterment or a privilege fee to connect to the system. For, for people whose, whose water was contaminated through no fault of their own, the town has taken value away from their property. By connecting to the municipal system, we, we give them their value back. Okay? So we, we, the, the town has, has made them whole again. The caveat there is that because North Carver Water District is an enterprise fund, we are required to send out bills. This is, this is the business side of what it is that I do. We, we generate revenue and we have expenses in, in doing that. Hopefully, we can make that all balance out, and, you know, we're getting there. But, you know, we don't, we don't have an option. We can't not send you a bill. Whether the, whether the residents who've connected, who connect to the system feel that that's, you know, a, a fair trade for, you know, what, what they're getting, I myself, I still have, I still have my own well. If, if the water line came down in front of my house, and it's only about 400 feet away, so we're almost there, I would connect in a heartbeat. Because then I can get rid of that filtration in, in my basement. I can get rid of the, the aging pump. I can get rid of the, the, the bladder tank. I've just recently had to spend some money to, to bring my, my water back up to, up to, up to where I need it to be. And it's, there's going to, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to be continuing costs. So water, even if you have your own well, is not free. Never has been, never will be. I happen to have the skill sets necessary so that I can do a lot of the work myself. But 600 turns into 1,500 real quick when you have to hire a plumber to do it. If you don't have those particular skill sets, you know, again, six turns into 15 pretty quickly. So, and so people need to kind of consider that just because you have a well, your water is not free. And it can't be. We can't provide free service to people. We're just not allowed to do that.
Because you're an enterprise fund?
That's right.
Yes. Because, because, well, basically, it's a business within the business.
Right.
I don't want to go, I'm not trying to stop, but I don't want to go too far away from the actual agenda item that we have here,
Okay.
which is just to set a deadline for people to tie into the, the water.
Well, John, and Mr. Carter had asked the question about betterments, and I know that it's out there, too.
Yes, it is.
So I thought it would be nice to clear it up. Appreciate it.
I think it's a very good idea.
The North Carver Water District does not intend to charge a betterment or a privilege fee to people who connect to the system.
Thank you.
But we will be sending bills.
Right.
Great.
And that's just how it is.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else from the board? All right. Is there a motion?
For what?
For the date. I moved, we set the date for, the deadline for the tie-in to the Plymouth Street water line for September 21st, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. All right. The next item is a discussion of possible vote to request a HD high-definition channel from Xfinity. Sir? Welcome?
Thanks.
This came out of a discussion I had with Rich Goulart, the executive director of Area 58, after our town administrator interviews. If you remember, there was a problem with the Area 58 feed during the town administrator interviews. Part of that went down. The live feed went down. And in talking to Rich, he mentioned, I don't think anybody had ever mentioned to us before, that in order for us to get an HD channel from Xfinity, the Select Board has to actually request that they give us an HD channel. So here we are. And, sir, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Well, basically, what you said was right. We were here not that long ago.
If you could just identify yourself.
Oh, Dan Ginnity, 47 Bow Street.
Thank you.
And you're on the, you're on the cable committee?
Cable Advisory Committee.
That's correct. I'm on the Area 58 Cable Committee, longstanding member. And I'm taking Rich's place because he gets to see Paul McCartney tonight. Not that I'm jealous. But we were here recently finalizing the contract with, between the town and Comcast. And that was done, signed, t's crossed, i's dotted. But one of the elements of that new contract is that we would be receiving an HD channel, high definition. Part of that process to get that high-definition channel, as you just said, is that a formal request needs to be made by the issuing authority, which is the Select Board. And he gave me an email that says what to say, so I'm going to say words.
Well, we have to, we have to make the motion.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I was just going to describe
Okay.
what goes into it. The costs for this are not absorbed by Comcast. Area 58 will be paying any fees related in the establishing of this channel. And a written request must come from the issuing authority, and that's listed in Section 6.1, Subsection C. After that request, Comcast has up to 36 months to provide that high-definition channel. And we conferred with Bill Hewig of KP Law. And we've got some verbiage that came from Bill on what the request is supposed to look like and the three bodies that it needs to be sent to. And I can have Rich email that to you folks. And that way, nothing gets lost in translation.
That, that'd be great. If you could have him email it to Ms. Weston?
Will do.
And, um, okay. Any questions from the board? All right. So I have a, I have a motion that was written by Rich Goulart. So pursuant to Section 6.1C of the current Comcast renewal license, the town of Carver hereby requests that Comcast activate one HD PEG channel. And we also request that Comcast advise us on the timeframe for completion and the costs, and that we request it done as soon as possible.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We're not quite Paul McCartney.
Yeah, it's, it's that close.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Right. That brings us to our next agenda item, our annual appointments to committees, boards, and commissions. I believe you all had a list of appointments in your packet. Does anyone have any questions on those?
Are all of these people aware that they're up for reappointment? So, so they know that we would be doing this tonight?
They all got a letter from us, correct, Ms. Weston?
Okay.
I'm, I'm aware as well.
Okay. I don't want to sign anyone up for something that they don't want to continue to.
All right. If you'd permit me, Sarah, I'm going to turn this particular agenda item over to you because my wife is up for reappointment on the Board of Registars, and I prefer to abstain from this whole item.
Okay. Well, why don't we take them separately?
Okay.
Well, yeah, because Sarah's on the list, too. So I don't know that she could do it, too.
That's right.
You just can't do that one.
I know.
Is there a motion on the Agricultural Commission?
A move that we appoint Joe Mix, Mike Nash, Sharon Mix, and Chuck Meredith, otherwise known as Sumner Meredith, to the Agricultural Commission.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Jen Toomey, Maureen Townsend, and Paul Frangello to the Board of Registars?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
All right. Community preservation. Is there a motion to reappoint Robert Bentley and Kevin Tracy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Fence viewer, is there a motion to reappoint Robert Elvin?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Robert Elvin as fence viewer.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Recreation Committee, as the, we have Caprice De Roget, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and Stephanie Waters. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. And the South Shore Community Action Council, is there a motion to reappoint Sarah Hewen?
I will abstain from that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and one abstention.
One abstention.
Thank you. All right, next up is the appointment of the Select Board Representative to the Plymouth County Advisory Board. I think that was the very first item. I am currently the Select Board Representative to the Advisory Board. I think that was the first item on the first agenda of the very first meeting I was at. I think they appointed me to that right away. They couldn't wait. And I think I've developed a pretty good repertoire with the Plymouth County Commissioners. So I would like to remain as that if the Board would be so willing.
Okay, I'll take that. Is there a motion to reappoint Mark Townsend to the Plymouth County Commission?
Plymouth County Advisory Board.
Advisory Board. I beg your pardon.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll abstain. Thank you.
Four, zero, one.
Thank you very much, folks. Next up is our, the Planning Board Representative to the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, SERPED. The Planning Board has appointed Cornelius Shea, and we need to confirm that appointment. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Question, is he going as the Select Board or the Planning Board rep?
He's going as the Planning Board rep.
Okay, did he check the correct box? Because there's mayor, Board of Selectmen, and Planning Board on the application, and he checked the little middle one, which looks like it's the Board of Selectmen box? I think maybe he should've checked the one on the right?
Mr. Fantasy, can you check with Mr. Shea?
Our representative is the town planner.
Right, that's what I thought. So I just think he accidentally put the check in.
He's kind of confused in a way it's set up.
Yeah, I know. It's, yeah, it's wonky, so.
All right.
So you can make the motion as the Planning Board Representative.
Right. All right, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to appoint Cornelius Shea, the SERPED representative, Planning Board Representative for the Town of Carver.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. All right, next is a motion to authorize the town administrator to create, create a committee, or committees, I guess, for addressing the annual town meeting articles number 26 and number 38, the moratoriums on the new ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations and battery storage. And as you will all recall, these were passed at a town meeting, and I thought it prudent that we get these committees put together as quickly as possible so they have as much time as possible to work on their, on their charges before the next town meeting. And, Mr. Fantasy?
Yes. So there's some confusion because the article itself, or both articles, did not say how the committees are put together and, and worked on. So there were two, two groups looking at it, you know, from the Planning Board and from my office, of how to best put together kind of a balanced committee to look at these issues and do what the articles say. You know, review, review other towns, review our own bylaws, and, and see what is in the best interest of health, safety, and welfare of the people. So I think, in talking to Tom Bott too, he's in agreement that it should be probably my office, if the Selectmen so vote, to set up that committee and start the process going. So comes down to a number, and not having it be too unwieldy with, you know, with 12 people on there. So, so I'm thinking probably somewhere around seven, seven people.
It's always a tough balancing act.
It is.
You don't want too many, but you don't want too few either, right?
Yeah, because too many is difficult to get a quorum sometimes, too.
Yes, it, yes, it can. And it's a, you know, some of the, especially the battery storage, that committee might require some, or the same committee, if you're, might require some specialized knowledge. I mean, those are, you know, you, that's a little, not, not too many people know about battery storage. Battery storage, so. Anyway, discussion from the board?
The, the solar moratorium was kind, not kind of, it was, was my idea, so I know that I would like to be involved.
Well, that would never happen.
I remember Jim, I remember you guys said, well, what if it passes, what's gonna happen? And I remember I made eye contact with you, and you said, I think I know someone who the very next day would start doing something. So if you guys would let me, and we want a Select Board rep, I would, I would really like to participate.
You know, I would see probably two, two reps from the Selectmen and two from the Planning Board.
And I think probably the thing, if, if, and I think, I understand why you wanna be involved, but I think what we probably should do if a Select Board Representative or member is interested in being involved, email Mr. Fantasy, let him know of your, your interest, and he'll do what he needs to do, put these committees together, so.
I, I think this is a really good idea, 'cause it needs to be set up by someone who's perceived as a sort of disinterested third party.
Non-political.
Yeah, non-political, absolutely. So I, I'd like to make a, unless there's more, well, we can have more discussion. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to create a committee for addressing annual town meeting articles 26 and 38, that's the 2022 annual town meeting, for moratoriums on new mounted solar photovoltaic installations and on battery storage.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Can I ask who else you might be thinking of?
Maybe a ZBA member, it's, not persons, person. And probably somebody from the agricultural industry, because a lot of times he's being used on agricultural properties. And probably the building commissioner as one. But, you know, I don't even wanna put it out there yet.
It doesn't have to be said, no, no.
Also, I know, I know Deputy Assistant Fire Chief Jesse Boyle is really up on this whole thing.
Yeah, and that's the other thing. I think what I can do is have some ex officio members, so it doesn't change the quorum, but they can participate. Who are employees of the town. Or, you know, or in the industry itself.
I think, I think one of the important things we need to address, at least with the battery storage item, is the, the fire issue, 'cause that was brought up at town meeting, and the, the fire department didn't really have a chance to respond.
They weren't allowed to.
And it's important that this committee, when they look into these things, address those issues, so we can.
Well, that's why, that's why I suggested Assistant Deputy Boyle, because he's a real expert on that.
My suggestion as well, 'cause they don't see that he's out there right now. And people need to be reassured that they're not gonna have an issue in their backyard, so. Anyway, we have a motion and a second.
Other question. And I think you've kind of addressed it. You talked about a seven-member committee, but when I was just listening to what we said, two BOS, two Planning Board, someone from fire, and then it just seemed like we got to seven pretty quickly.
Yeah, I know, I know. I think seven voting members, and then with ex officio.
That's why he mentioned ex officio, so that.
Is there a plan to get people like, with, I know one of the big issues had to do with water concerns and things like that, so we're looking for someone that would be like the environmental specialist or someone that had a great background in water, because those are kind of the key issues that are gonna come up in this thing.
Yep.
So.
And again, that, that could even, if it's somebody from the industry, so, so to speak, that can even be an ex officio that comes in and advises us as we're going through this process.
Great, thanks.
All right, anything else? All right, again, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. All right, next is the approval of the KP Law rate increase to $225 with higher rates for certain complex issues that are considered specialty legal services. I guess everything continues to go up, and this is just one more, one more thing. Mr. Fantasy, just for informational purposes, if we were to vote against this, what, what would happen?
Well, they would probably stop representing us, because that's their rates now.
Okay, so we don't have a.
Or we can attempt to negotiate with them, you know, additional rates.
We don't, we don't have a whole lot of choice, really, with this particular.
Right, not at this point. And do you want me to say what the rates will be?
Yeah, if you have those other rates for.
So, so the general legal services will be 205, it's 205 now, go up to 225 an hour. The comprehensive permit matters, including hearings, similar paid for by third parties. If it's paid by a third party, the hourly rate is 360 an hour. Right now, it's 205. If it's paid by the municipality, it will be 330 an hour, and currently 205. So it's kind of a big jump on that.
Yeah, it's a pretty good jump.
And then also, comprehensive general zoning bylaw revisions and reviews, and you see that mostly around town meeting time. In comprehensive form of government charter and special act adoption amendment, that's going from 205 to 300 an hour. And cable licensing, which we don't have to worry about for 10 years, that's going up to 300 an hour too.
All right. Is there a motion from the board?
So.
figuring out how much we owe.
So, so I will make that motion, but I also wanted to point out that we're just not, we're not in a contractual agreement with them, are we?
Probably 10 years ago, no?
No, I, I don't think we ever kept that. So if we should choose to, at some point in time, go with a different legal firm, we could do that.
Yeah, you can always do a bid, you know, for, I don't know, RFPing.
And we probably need an, an agenda item at some point in the future to discuss.
Right. I'm not gonna talk about that. I just wanted people to understand that this doesn't, you know, latch us in for the next five years or something.
No, this is a, a lot of, a lot of firms have yearly increases. Not, not that dramatic, but they haven't had one for, you know, a few years.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms.
No, you go for it. I always start first.
So we said there's no contract, but we're starting this off ours in the next fiscal year, starting July 1. And really, we don't really have much of a choice. What I'm hearing is that they either stop tomorrow or July 1, and we go on our own.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah, if there's litigation, the active litigation, they can't just walk out of a, a case. They have to petition the court to get permission to, to end that, end that representation of that case. So it's not like, on those, they can't just walk out. But then they would, if they, if they were to do more work, and we said, well, what am I gonna pay you? 'Cause it's after July 1, and they would sue us for the difference.
And just for what it's worth, I've dealt with attorneys, the rates seem.
John, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I deal with some attorneys, so these rates aren't overly large, but I am concerned about the, the sizable jump per hour.
Yeah, and generally municipal law attorneys that handle multiple clients like that, their rates are lower than the general population of attorneys.
Yeah.
And I agree with you. It's a, it's a low rate when you see it by itself, but in context of representing multiple cities and towns, they're all, you know, within that range.
Thank you.
Ms. Bogart, thank you.
Yeah, so before, everything was 205.
Correct.
Right? So now they're going from 205 to 330 for some things.
On the high end, yeah, on the certain things.
Okay, in my opinion, that's absurd, and we're not under a contract. And I, I don't know, I've heard it, I've heard it a few times here, but we, we may have a lawyer on staff now.
Who walked in?
This, this is, I mean, this is not a 510 or whatever, that's, that's insane. So I've, we had a discussion, I don't know, a, a year or so before, about moving in a different direction with them, and I thought we should then, and I think we should now. And the fact that I even just heard you guys talk about putting it as a future agenda item gives me hope that maybe it actually does happen.
Yeah, I think, I think we need an agenda item at some point on this.
I just, I can't support this. This is, this is not good for the town.
We, we at least need to give KP a chance to, to discuss this with us.
Yeah, this is.
At this point, we need to, we do have ongoing litigation that we need to, we need to deal with.
But he did say they can't walk away from it unless a judge says it's okay.
That's true, but we still have to pay them.
Right.
So. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Sorry, I, I was an I, four, sorry.
Four to one, is that correct? Okay. All right, next item up is the approval of the governing board member for the Investment Committee election ballot of Plymouth County OPEB Trust Program, Arthur Battistini, or a write-in. And just a quick correction, I think it says on your, in your packet that Arthur Battistini is from the Carver, Town of Carver, but he's not from the Town of Carver. He's from the Town of Middleborough. He just represents all of the Plymouth County OPEB Trust, which obviously includes Carver. So we have a choice to either support Mr. Battistini, or we could offer a write-in candidate. Are there any members of the Carver Select Board who would be interested in, in this position? Hearing none, okay. Is there a motion to support Mr. Battistini?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. And next up is approval of the town drug and alcohol-free workplace policy. And I guess before we, this has been a priority of mine for quite some time, as I think most of you know, and I really want to reach out and just thank Mrs. Weston and Mr. Fantasy for working so hard on this, because I, I know there was a lot of back and forth, and I appreciate it. So I hope you've all had a chance to read through it. I think we all have felt in the past that this was important, and I think the policy you have before you is a pretty all-encompassing policy.
If I may.
Mr. Fantasy.
So the only changes from the last time we looked at this is in red. As you can see, is adding all elected and appointed members of any town board, commission, or committee. And then on the second page, it's the same language as in D. So that, so it's not only employer, employees, which was the original one. It's been added to encompass everybody who has, as an official.
Thank you, Mr. Fantasy. Is there any questions from the board?
I have, I have one quick one. On the back of the first page where it says that including all elected and appointed members of any town board, commission, or committee must sign a statement, et cetera, of the Drug-Free Workplace Act. And that's something that supersedes this?
That's, that's what this is, right?
Well, this is called the Drug and Policy, Alcohol-Free Workplace Policy.
That's just acknowledging that they know about it, correct?
Okay.
Or can be changed to Policy, correct?
Okay. Thanks.
And then you'll see the signature page on the last page.
Oh, yeah, so you're just pointing out that it's a different, yeah, instead of Drug-Free Workplace Act, it should say Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace Policy.
That's awesome.
I have a question as well on the sanctions. So it says violations of any and all provisions of this policy may result in disciplinary action up to and including termination from employment.
All right, so maybe, that's a good point, Jim. Maybe it should say, or removal from.
Office.
From office, committee.
Yes, yeah, I think that probably needs to be added, would you, from any board committee.
The thing is, with an elected position, you wouldn't be able to remove them.
You wouldn't be able to remove them, that's right.
Could we just, should we just change that to add termination of employment or removal from office? Is that?
Yeah, but you can't, you can't.
You can't remove an elected official. Physician from office.
But you can say, or, or removal from an appointed.
Physician.
Physician.
As an appointed official.
Yeah, that, that, that was, that was my, what I meant.
As an appointed official.
Good point.
Well, thank you, Jim.
And then where it refers to Board of Selectmen, should probably just change to Select Board.
Yeah.
For consistency.
Yes, it should.
Yeah. It's so funny, you read this 10 times.
I know.
It's always like that.
Eyes go right over those things, you know?
Is there a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as the Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace Policy as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you again.
So we'll clean that up and get it out to everybody.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our town administrator update.
I have one update. So there was a, an unsubstantiated rumor out there that the federal government is gonna withhold the second part of the opera funds from cities and towns. So I called Senator Keaton's office and spoke to Michael Jackman, not Jackson, Jackman, a couple of times, and, and he looked into it, went right to Washington, and said that that's false. We're still online to get the, the second payment. And the payment is $615,875, or something in that range. I did talk to Tom O'Brien yesterday too, to see about the, the status of the money that comes to the, to the county, that we will get some of. And he said all of this money is now in the new, the final rule is that it will be dispersed to us from the government one year and one month, within one year and one month of when we got our first check. So we got our first check in, on August 10th, 2021. So, so by September 10th, 2021, well, 2022, this September, we should get that second check. Same thing for the county, and it's roughly the same time, theirs was September, September 12th or something, when they got theirs. So on the county one, we're in line for the first payment of $54,258. So, so we have some money coming in, which is a nice thing.
Yes, we do. We'll, we'll schedule a future, an agenda item with Mr. O'Brien, as we did before. Mr. Carter, I don't think you were, you were here, but we, Tom O'Brien, who's the Plymouth County Treasurer, is sort of the, the rules guy, and what you can use our before and what you can't. So we'll schedule an agenda item, probably have him in for a discussion and make some determinations on, on some uses of the opera funds.
Good.
Are we gonna have a committee for that as well?
Mr. Fantasy, what are your thoughts?
You know, I think it'd be good to have a small committee, not a, not a nine-person committee, but maybe, you know, four or five people to talk about what to do with these funds. The county funds, those are the four bucket funds, where you have to use it out of, out of one of the buckets that, that's authorized. The, the town funds are more liberal, you know, on, on use. So, so it's sitting, and it's sitting in our bag right now, the first one. So it would be good, probably now that we're getting the, the final payment coming in in a few months, just to look at the use.
We'll, we'll schedule an agenda item to authorize, probably the town administrator, if we can discuss it, to, to put together that.
Mm-hmm.
That group. Anything else on that? All right, that brings us to minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. The agenda says that our next meeting is on June 21st, but we will be holding an executive session on June 15th. Also, so the board knows, I had sent out an email to everybody about their summer schedules, and it was a little bit difficult, but, uh, because virtually the entire Board of Selectmen is on vacation a different week in July. But I did come up with one day that would work for everybody, which is Wednesday, July 6th. So we will be meeting on Wednesday, July 6th, a regular meeting time of 6 o'clock at night, unless there's an executive session. And we'll be meeting in August on Tuesday, August 2nd, which would be our, the first Tuesday of the month. That's our regular meeting date. That August 2nd meeting will most likely be our goals and objectives meeting with, with Mark Rogers, who was the gentleman that, again, Mr. Carter, you weren't on the board, but everyone else will remember him from, from last year. I thought he did a, an excellent job. Mr. Fantasy and Ms. Weston, do you know if he confirmed his availability for that meeting?
He is. Actually, I, I had a Zoom meeting with him this morning.
Great.
Just to get to know him and put a face to a name, so to speak.
And it's at 6:00 PM as well?
6:00 PM as well, unless.
It's at 5:00.
We set that to 5:00? Okay, so that'll be at 5:00 PM. And could you, could you talk to the folks over at the fires? Thank you. I should've known better.
That's what she does to me.
All right, so, so those are your, the meetings. Approval of the minutes of May 19th and May 24th, uh, 1st. May 24th, I'm sorry. Ms. Bogart, I know I saw an email from you earlier. Ms. Bogart, I know I saw an email from you earlier requesting that we table, was it May 19?
Yes, because question 15 listed the question I didn't ask, and it was missing answers for Mr. Fantasy and Mr. McGovern. It was the question about if a resident called or emailed you, how long would it take you to get back to them? And their answers weren't there. And especially since four of us referenced it in why we, part of why we hired him, I think it's really important that it's in there. So I think, I hope you all really looked at it to make sure that your questions and answers are there and accurate, too. So I have to go back and watch the meeting to make sure that it gets added in accurately. So the 19th, please table them.
So we can do that. I believe, though, and Ms. Weston and Mr. Fantasy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this meeting, the executive session on the 15th, will be our third meeting since then. So I think we have to approve those minutes by that. So we'll have to include an open session item on the 15th just to approve those minutes if you'd like to make a motion to table those minutes.
Sure, yeah, motion to table the May 19, 2022 minutes to the June 15.
June 15.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, how about the May 24th?
Motion to approve May 24, 2022 minutes.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the approval of executive session minutes of May 24, 2022, and not for public release.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see, we have a one-day special license for the Carver Sportsman's Club on July 17, 2022, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the one-day license.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We have no Select Board notes, so Select Board community announcements. Mr. Hartman?
I just wanted to congratulate all of the graduates, Carver graduates from Carver High and all the surrounding high schools on their recent graduation, and good luck in the future.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hewens?
I wanted to thank the Police Department, Fire Department, Veterans Agent, Assistant Veterans Agent, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, everyone who participated in our Memorial Day Parade. It was a really nice, it was a good day.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
I think that, I think I'm all set. I was just going to comment on the graduation on Memorial Day, but that's fine.
All right. Ms. Bogart?
Remind people that the yard sale is June 25, and the deadline to sign up is next Thursday, and that's it.
All right. And I have a couple of things. I would also like to congratulate all our graduates, as well as thank everyone who participated in the Memorial Day Parade. It was a beautiful day, and I heard a lot of feedback from residents that they had a great time. In addition, just a couple of things. The Friends of the Council on Aging are sponsoring an electronic recycling day on Saturday, June 25, from 8:00 AM to noon in the Our Lady of Lord's parking lot. Prices vary for different electronic items that you want to dispose of. You can get more information and a price list at their website, which is friendscarvercoa.com. Again, friendscarvercoa.com. This coming Sunday, June 12, is the opening day for the Carver Farmers Market at Shirtlift Park. The market's open from 12 to 4, so stop by and check that out. And I just want to congratulate the Carver Crusaders baseball team, who won their first playoff game yesterday against Smith Vocational, 3 to 1. And they play again tomorrow at home at 4:00 PM against Shirley, so come on out and support Carver baseball. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?